I'm on. Am I on? I, I have. I'm on. Can you hear? Okay, thank you. Hey Gary, welcome. Gary?
Thanks, I'm here.
Are there any public comments on closed session items? Okay. Testing. Testing. Wait, okay, very good. Are we on live yet? Or, we are on live, okay. Are there any public comments on closed session items, Michelle? No comments, alright, then we'll adjourn to closed session. You can get out of this regular meeting and go to closed session. Thank you.
All right, we reconvene to a regular meeting. There are student representatives. Arianna Galván from Toki High. Is she available?
I'm here.
Oh, thank you. William Machado from Loda High?
Yes, I'm here, Mr. Nava.
All right, William, welcome to the meeting, okay?
Thank you.
Let's all stand for the pledge. There is no report on actions from closed session. We have a recognition, National School Psychologists Week. Ms. McFarland? Is he gonna read it? Oh, he changed his mind. Okay, Mr. Porter.
Okay, the National School Psychologist Week, November 9th through the 13th, 2020, Loda Unified School District proclamation. Whereas all children and youth learn best when they are healthy, supported, and receive an education that enables them to strive, grow, and thrive academically, socially, and emotionally. And whereas schools can more effectively ensure that all students are able to learn when they meet the needs of the whole child and provide integrated, multi-tiered support. And whereas children's mental health is directly linked to their learning and development, and their learning environment provides an optimal context to promote good mental health. And whereas sound psychological principles are integral to instruction and learning, social and emotional development, prevention, early intervention, and school safety, and supporting culturally diverse student populations. And whereas school psychologists are especially trained to deliver a continuum of mental health services and academic supports that lower barriers to teaching and learning. And whereas school psychologists help children to thrive by nurturing their individual strengths across both personal and academic endeavors. And whereas school psychologists are trained to assess student and school-based barriers to learning as well as individual strengths, utilize data-based decision-making, implement research-driven prevention and intervention strategies, and evaluate outcomes and improve accountability. Now therefore, be it resolved that the Board of Education of Loda Unified School District hereby designates November 9th through the 13th, 2020, as the National School Psychologist Week, signed this day by Suma McFarland, Clerk of the Board of Loda Unified School District, and Joe Nava, President of the Board of Loda Unified School District. Thank you, school psychologists.
Thank you, Mr. Porter. Very good. Okay, I declare this open hearing, open, Loda Unified School District contract reopeners with Loda Pupil Personnel Association, LPPA for 2020, 21 year. Mr. McMillan, McIllicane, he's not here. Okay, hearing is open. Any board comments? Any public comments? Any public comments?
Um, no, there is not.
All right, then I declare this public hearing closed. We have the superintendent's report. Dr. Washer?
Thank you, Mr. Nava, members of the board. One of the issues we've been concerned about during this time of remote learning is the momentum we had with the goal of all students reading by the end of third grade. I want to recognize our primary grade teachers for keeping this focus during this time. This has been evident during our visits, and I want to acknowledge Lawrence staff and Oakwood staff for their work in the reading of all students at the primary level. Primary grade teachers are doing a phenomenal reading skills lessons and have excellent participation from their students. We have seen firsthand how teachers are doing creative lessons and activities to continue to teach children to read. I want to thank our school sites for their efforts to provide fun and safe Halloween activities for their students and families. Several schools found creative ways to host an event for their community, and they all were following health and safety guidelines. I do also want to acknowledge the concerns that have been shared recently about bringing students to our campuses for in-person instruction. Whether parents want their children on campuses or prefer that they learn from home, we understand that parents need information and that our staff members also need information as soon as possible. Loda Unified is working through the appropriate processes with employee groups, and all employee groups are giving thoughtful consideration to very complex issues. We thank our employee groups for their collaboration during this time, and I'm optimistic about this process. Thank you, Mr. Nava.
Thank you, Dr. Washer. Thank you, Dr. Washer, for your report. We have comments from the public. A 20-minute time period has been set aside for the public to address the board on items not listed on the agenda. Each public speaker should limit his or her comments to three minutes due to restrictions imposed by the California Brown Act. Regarding discussing topics that are not on the agenda, board members may not engage in dialogue about the issue. Have any public comments, Michelle?
Yes, we have four.
Four public comments, okay, let's put the first one on.
Brenda De La Torre.
Brenda, you're on.
Brenda, you are self-muted.
All right, sorry about that, can everyone hear me?
Yes.
Okay, good. Good evening, board members, here we are, November 5th. Cohorts were supposed to start on November 2nd. Our elementary students were supposed to go back November 9th, and middle school November 16th. Yet where are we in this plan, nowhere close to being done, are we? The public and your constituents have appointed you to your positions, and we know nothing, because everything has been done behind closed doors, no transparency, no communication, only a vague statement given to us that you met with the teachers' union on the 22nd. What happened about the meeting on the 27th? Or how about the upcoming meeting that you have to be held in November? When will these meetings come to a decision on getting our children back to school? What plans have you given to our teachers to ensure their safety and the safety of our students? I am 100% for all instruction in person. Yet I know teachers are fearful and they would like to go hybrid models, so let's work together and get this done. Kathy Washer was supposed to be the superintendent of our district. Show your students that we can come together with differing opinions for the greater good of our students. If that's what a hybrid model consists of, then that's what we need to do. Yes, I know I'm only a parent and I don't know the complexity of the situation, but I do know the struggles and the frustrations of the parents. Maybe I'm the only one with the balls to speak up and show you those frustrations, but what I do know is that our children are struggling mentally, physically, emotionally, and most important, their education is struggling. The teachers do a good job. Some are better than others to teach our children distance learning, yet some teachers are struggling with their own families and their own children at home. So get us all back, if that's what the hybrid model consists of, I urge you to act swiftly and to get our children back. Why there is no plan yet, I have no idea. You have had months upon months to come up with a plan. You are all acting like a bunch of schoolchildren. He said, she said, it's his fault, it's her fault. Nobody's fault but all of yours. Own up to your mistakes, own up to your responsibilities, and do the job. At last board meeting, Kathy Washer stated that there were 100 and something cases in the previous day. What about today, only 31 cases out of your county? 700,000 people, 31 new positive cases. Let my children go back to school and do what you were elected to do, thank you.
Thank you, next, Michelle?
Next, we have Kathy Yeager.
Kathy, you're on.
Can you hear me?
Yes.
Thank you, President Nava, Dr. Washer, and members of the board. Thank you for taking my call. My name is Kathy Yeager, and this is my 14th year of teaching for Loda Unified School District. For the past six years, I have been the Social Science Department Chair at Krista McCullough Middle School. As was discussed in the September 15th board meeting, you are all aware that the middle school department chairs from Loda Middle, Millswood, and Krista McCullough have all stepped down from their department chair positions. You've all received our letters of resignation as well as a detailed list of the duties we perform. I would like to address some points regarding this tonight. We've been offered a small concession, which is only a temporary fix and not a solution, with the time card for extra work, task-specific, at almost $38 per hour, five hours max per month. As a reminder, our colleagues at the elementary level are paid a head teacher stipend of 4% of $30,000, which equals $1,500 for the year. Our colleagues at the high school level are paid $4,000 a year, not on a time card. So that means if we both work 60 hours, middle school department chairs will be paid $2,280, and high school department chairs are paid $4,000. Hourly, this is $38 compared to 67. Both our high school and elementary counterparts are rightfully given a permanent stipend, and we would ask for the same compensation. I would love to hear the clarification on this decision. The contract does not specify just high school department chairs, regardless of the history of the contract. It is the language of the contract that should be recognized. This is very disheartening and disrespectful at the very least. Those of us that have been working for Loda Unified are very aware that time cards are temporary, and we've experienced in the past that when the district runs out of money, time cards do not get paid, and these middle school department chair time cards can go to the wayside. When I look at our current situation with distance learning and COVID, it weighs very heavy on my heart that the department chairs are not being able to help our administration as they are developing our site safety plans and the overall well-being at our site. Department chairs are a critical link between administration and teachers, and they are needed more now than ever. At Krista, our administration and leadership team have worked together to ensure that both staff and student needs are being met. Our leadership team is a cohesive body that represents our staff voice and input, something that is critical in the planning of reopening our schools. If middle school department chairs were valued like our high school counterparts, our site safety plan would not solely fall on the shoulders of our administration. Middle school department heads are responsible for so many aspects of making our schools run smoothly and effectively. I'll leave you with one final question. Will you place as much value on middle school department chairs as you do our high school counterparts? And give us permanent stipends for the insight and commitment we provide to our schools? Thank you for your time.
Thank you, Kathy. Michelle, next?
Morgan Cedarholm.
Morgan, you're on.
Can you hear me?
Yes.
Good evening. I'm a parent of a kindergartner at Reese and a second grader at Beckman, both in special day classes. I spoke during public comment two months ago at the September 8th board meeting regarding reopening schools to students in special day classes. I talked about my son's regression and my concerns for meeting IEPs and providing a free and appropriate public education in the least restricted environment. It has been two months since the state approved small cohorts for these small classes, and I've been waiting optimistically for that notification text message from the district on my phone of a return date, any day now. I keep telling myself, I keep telling my boss, any day now. At the next meeting, I listened to the state and county health departments had approved all schools in our county to open since we met criteria for the red blueprint tier assignment for two weeks. I assume this was good news as well. You said you were following the science, and now the science says we can reopen under the state of California's blueprint for a safer economy. All the health guidelines were laid out for us. Sandwoking County Public Health Services was in contact with the district, and the superintendent sounded ready to go. Many people still had concerns, but the guidance regarding risks and health and safety measures were answered, and these questions are available to anyone online in those guidelines. They've been up there since August 3rd. But here I am again, because you haven't listened to the science like you said you would. You haven't set a date based on the criteria we were supposed to go by. And worst of all, you haven't prioritized students with special needs like the governor suggested you do. So I'd like to know, if you aren't making the decision to reopen based on the state's blueprint tier assignment and county public health data, what scientific information are you using to make your decision? Do you have special insight or information that the local health officials don't have? Are you waiting for the orange cheer? Please, inform the public of exactly which metric or blueprint you're using so that we know what to expect and we can plan accordingly, whether that's work plans, therapy for the kids, or inter-district transfers. We just want specifics. And saying until further notice, until further notice, all the time, that's not an acceptable plan. So, I mean, no one here was elected on the basis that you'd be governing a virtual school district, and you don't have evidence that distance learning is an acceptable way of meeting IEPs. And if we expect teachers to use evidence-based practices in their classrooms, we should expect the school board to use evidence-based decision-making as they give direction. The government says we can reopen, and science says we can reopen. The tier assignment shows that Sandwoking County has only six new cases per day for 100,000 people and a 3.7% test positivity rate. Sandwoking County's Public Health Services says we have 937 active cases in the entire county today, which in a population of over 762,000 is 0.1% active cases. That means 99.9% of our county is not actively infected with COVID-19. Population divided by active cases, you can look it up. Many schools in many counties in many states with higher numbers than these have been open since August and have not had to close. Students and teachers wear their masks and follow the guidelines. To paraphrase Dr. Anthony Fauci, the guidelines aren't meant to help, or the guidelines are meant to help us reopen safely, sorry, not to restrict us from reopening. They didn't put up these guidelines to stop people from going. The guidelines are to help us reopen safely. So we can reopen and trust the science. At the same time, that's what the tier system is all about. And if everyone hasn't read those guidelines, the August 3rd school reopening guidelines, everybody, even parents, can read them. They're a lot less intimidating than they seem. And at a time like this, it would just be great if our community could just come together and do this, both trust the science. Oh, I'm sorry, so if 99% isn't a good enough number for the board, please tell us what is. Either follow the signs, open the schools immediately for the guidance, or share with families what specific criteria you're looking for to reopen, thank you.
Thank you, Morgan. Michelle, one more?
Next, we have Renee Sanchez.
Renee, you're on.
Hello, can you hear me?
Yes.
Okay, hi, good evening. Hello, President Nava and board. Thank you for taking the time to hear me. I am talking to you on behalf of Loda Unified Supervisory Group. I thought I was gonna come in on your closed session, so sorry about the confusion. So I just kind of wanted to touch bases with you about something that was brought to your attention to the board meeting on September 15th, as well as October 20th, about flex time for the supervisory group. There are 10 departments that are currently supervising CSEA members. When the pandemic started, all of us came together to create a program in order to control and handle the pandemic. We worked tirelessly together with CSEA. Our contracts mirror CSEA, and we were hoping that you would see us in the same light as CSEA and grant us with the flex time that they have been granted with. We had to implement and provide staff with crucial information. We were required to train, implement safety guidelines per CDC and from, I'm sorry, excuse me, from CDC and public health, as well as the governor and for the district. We had to hang up signage, we had to create a program in order to be able to provide meals safely for our students, as well as keeping our staff safe. As I mentioned, there are 10 departments with less than 50 supervisors. All of us, not all of us, but majority of us reported to work physically in order to implement the safety protocols and to supervise our staff in multiple locations. We have been there to make sure that everybody is safe. We work together, we couldn't have done it without MNO, without technology, you know, without special education. As the accounting department, I think everybody came together as a group collectively to ensure the safety for all of our employees and our students. And as a supervisory group, we are just asking that we be treated the same since our contracts mirror the same as CSEA in order to be granted that flex time. Thank you for your time, I appreciate your consideration on this matter.
Thank you, Renee. That concludes our public comments. All right, we have comments from the board. We'll start out with Mr. Porter today.
Mr. Nava, I have no comments tonight.
No comments from Mr. Porter, Ms. McFarland?
Thank you, President Nava. I'll make it real brief, I just want to thank everyone for their patience. These are difficult times. We're working as quickly and as diligently with all of our bargaining groups, and we appreciate the understanding. We also, as a board, would like our children back in school in the safest possible manner, and sometimes this takes a little longer than we would like. I'd also like to thank MNO and all the help at the warehouse for delivering PP. I know it's ongoing, I'd like to thank them.
Thank you, Ms. McFarland, Mr. Heberly?
Ms. McFarland addressed what I was going to say beautifully, so I echo her appreciation for patience. It is very frustrating, but we are trying to get things rolling as quickly as possible, so thank you.
Gary?
Yes, well, I agree with Mr. Heberly. Ms. McFarland said exactly the things I wanted to say. So, thank you, Mrs. McFarland.
All right, Mr. Freitas?
Thank you, President Nava. I would like to join in my colleague's comments about patience. Every single member of this board loves kids, and every single member of this board is working tirelessly 24/7 to figure out a way to make this thing happen. Also, tonight's election night, and we still have 21 minutes before the polls close. If you haven't voted yet, get out there and let's get it done. This is one of the great things about our democracy. One of the clerical workers in my office told me that her 92-year-old father was voting today for the very first time in his life. And that gives me goosebumps thinking about it. I also like to congratulate, my grandson turned 18 in July, and he voted for the very first time in his life. So this is an amazing thing that our society provides for, and I think it's absolutely fantastic that we, the people, get to make these type of decisions. So we also, I encourage everyone, take advantage of it, and let's get it done. Also, before our next meeting, we'll be celebrating Veterans Day. And I know at least two members of our board, Mr. Connect, Mr. Neely, served in the armed forces, and I'd like to commend them for their service, commend all of our Loda Unified family that served in the armed forces and gave so much to our country so that we have these rights and the ability to vote that we all talked about. Also, the district has been recognizing our employees for years of service. Is that correct, Dr. Washer? And that is available. And congratulations to each and every one of those people that were recognized. This Loda Unified family is amazing, and to think that the years of service that the people have dedicated to us, the contributions they have made, and how much they have given to our kids, is very greatly appreciated. So, anyway, those are the comments I have, thank you, President Nava.
Thank you, Mr. Freitas, thanks, Ms. McFarland, our speaker for tonight on our deal for bringing back our kids back to school. I have no other comments, I have comments from student reps. Ms. Galván from Toki High School?
I just want to say something really quickly, is that I understand that it does take time to figure everything out, but the faster that we can get it done is amazing, and hopefully we can get it done within the next few weeks, because the longer that we are on this distance learning, the harder it's getting for all these students, for all age levels, especially elementary school and middle school. They need to go back just as much as high school does. So, please, just listen to the parents, listen to the students, because we want to get back sooner than later. Thank you.
Thank you, Ariana, for your comments, well. Okay, William, you're next.
Thank you, President Nava and members of the board.
Thank you, President Nava and members of the board. So far, I mean, we're still going through distance learning, and we're not enjoying it, as you all can probably imagine. I think coming back from our two-week break, I can say for Lowdi High, we've done a lot better job, I think, utilizing social media. We've held Spirit Weeks where, as I mentioned last time, we have our Flame Flex Fridays. So we've been utilizing those to highlight our Spirit Weeks and get students to send in pictures of them dressing up for the Spirit Weeks. So, that's just one thing so far. Our parent club has elected new officers for mainly our new senior class, and they're holding quite a few events to help bring our student body together. We've had snow cone events and boo grams, and so far they raised a pretty good chunk of money to go to the parent club fund, go straight back into the student body. For our student government class, we've been doing quite a few assignments more than planning as it's been kind of tough to really plan for any events. One thing about that is, I think mainly for the club advisors, we're going to need a clearer message on the stance from the district on what is acceptable and what isn't. I know I mentioned that last time as well and brought up the idea of an outline. So if, now, I'm not very informed on if that outline was wrong, if the outline was brought or if it was not, but if we could get that done as soon as possible, that would be extremely helpful to everyone. Student government, the student government representatives have reached out to about six staff members each to be a student liaison for teachers to be a bigger part of our student government activities, and just help give us ideas because they're a big part in our schooling as well, I guess, probably, possibly the biggest. Our Star Club is holding a virtual Jog-a-thon thanks to Mrs. Osterman's efforts. The members will be collecting pledges and jogging on their own, and I guess sending it in virtually, which is obviously not what we want to be doing, but it's the best that we can do. So all the money raised will be going to a nonprofit. Again, huge thank you to Mrs. Osterman. That's a huge thing that she's doing for our school. Interact Club has been meeting regularly and doing volunteer work with retirement homes and food drives. And then I guess just one final thank you to the custodial staff. I guess they've been doing a pretty good job of giving PPE and installing appliances for the teachers on our campus. So I'll keep it kind of short, but I guess one thing I do want to end off with is it seems kind of odd that there's no topic on a return date on the agenda for tonight. I know there's only so much that we can do, or mainly you guys can do as a district, and there's only so much you can talk about, but I think that clearly seen through the public comments, it's a pretty big issue right now, and people are pretty fired up about it. So I think just having the district discuss these topics is going to be the best way to kind of heal a divided relationship between the district and parents of the district. So I'll leave with that, and thank you again for having Ariana and I tonight.
Thank you, William. Thank you for your comments. I just want to make a couple of comments. A lot of things are happening at Lowdi High with the buildings and the gymnasium and locker room and areas at Toki High School, so we're making some progress in that. So when you people go back to school in person, you will hopefully appreciate that. Thank you.
Mr. Nava, if you don't mind if I say one more thing?
I do not mind. Go ahead, Ariana.
I wanted to acknowledge the counselors at Toki. I don't know if Lowdi High is having the same thing going on, but our counselors are meeting every Monday. They just started this week, but we're meeting, and I've joined on for these meetings the last two days. And a lot of freshmen have been joining just to talk about very serious topics, stress and anxiety and depression and things that are going on when we're in school. And if the board members would like to join that, I would very encourage you guys to listen in on these conversations because a lot of these topics are something that needs to be discussed, and these counselors are doing a great job with acknowledging all of that. So a really big thank you to Mr. Glaner and Ms. Salis at Toki. They're doing amazing.
Thank you, Ariana. Thank you for your comments. Okay, we're continuing with the agenda, and we're going to our reports. Mr. Khan's staff will provide information regarding North Stockton On-Bill Financing. Mr. Khan?
Thank you, President Nava, members of the board. Dr. Washer, staff would like to pull this report until and bring it back November 17th. This is Mr. Holloway's report, and he was unavailable tonight to provide.
All right, I have no objections on pulling that report. Dr. Khan, we're going to make sure Mr. Holloway is prepared for presentation, okay? So there will be no comments from anybody here. Let's go to the next report, which is yours also. Staff will report on railroad joint use agreement on the Acampo roadside kitchen. Two things here.
Thank you, President Nava, members of the board. Dr. Washer, I'd like to introduce Director Rastamelli, who will join me on the Acampo roadside kitchen portion of this update, facilities update. The rationale for bringing this before the board as a report was to seek direction as to whether to proceed or not to proceed. From the business perspective, this is the time of year when we need to begin preparing our bid packages so that in essence we can get our projects bid out in the January, February timeframe, and then we're not competing for contractors for summer projects in the March, April, May timeframe. But at this time, I'll also introduce Director Rastamelli to provide some input on food services needs as well. Michelle, do you have?
Hello there. Can you hear me?
I can hear you.
Excellent. Thank you very much, Mr. Khan. Dr. Washer, President Nava, and members of the board, I'm Nancy Rastamelli, the Nutrition Services Director. And I did want to comment on the agenda item to update the Houston Serna Kitchen and to continue with the remodel as Mr. Khan had stated. I would like to start by highlighting some of the facts about the Acampo campus. The Houston School Kitchen was closed seven or eight years ago when enrollment and participation dropped to a level that was not enough to support the two to three staff members that it does take to operate a full-service kitchen. Houston's enrollment has historically hovered around 150 to 160 students with 62% to 65% participation in the lunch program. With the addition of the Joe Serna Campus to the Acampo location, the numbers of students participating in the meal program and the number of meal services required daily has significantly increased. Enrollment is now over 500 students with an average of 325 lunch meals that are being spread out over five lunch periods daily, plus two breakfast services and two supper services are offered at dismissal. When the schools were combined onto one campus, the start and dismissal times by design were not coordinated or synced between the two campuses. This impacts and extends the needed times to serve all of the meals on this campus, and the structure to keep the students' population separate does present challenges not only in the MP room, but also to prepare, to staff, and to deliver the meals from the central kitchen. Currently, the meals are still being transported out of the central kitchen, which is requiring a minimum of three separate deliveries per day to meet the demands for meals and due to the kitchen not having adequate and proper storage. The kitchen is antiquated and does not have refrigerator or freezer storage, and the existing walk-in box cannot be fixed to meet the current needs. The doors have been removed for safety, and the freezer box has been leaking for years, and the infrastructure will need to be repaired and that box replaced. There were some superficial updates done this year. The floor was painted to make it presentable for the current school year, and it looks great, but it was not made to be a non-skin surface, and any moisture or wetness on the floor does make it an incredible slip and fall hazard. Traditionally, any school with roughly 200 to 250 lunch meals becomes its own operating independent standalone cooking kitchen. And the logistics to prepare and transport the food, coupled with food quality and food safety, are the main drivers behind the decisions to be a standalone operating kitchen. I am requesting from you tonight to please revisit and approve updating the Houston Serna Kitchen so that it can once again become a standalone self-supporting independent kitchen so that it can provide a standalone independent cooking kitchen that can support both of these campuses and the 500-plus student population and allow for us and Nutrition Services to provide the high-quality, fresh, nutritious meals that we strive to provide. Thank you. If you have any questions, I'm happy to attempt to answer those.
Thank you, Nancy, for making us aware of all these things. At one time, I was actually ignorant with the fact that I didn't know why we were paying so much for that kitchen, but now I understand. Is there any comments from the board? Mr. Heberly, Mr. Freitas? Mr. Porter? I'm sorry.
President. Mr. Khan, how would this be paid for?
I'm sorry.
How will we pay for this?
The monies were budgeted well over, well, not probably about 10 months ago, and the board's Fund 40, the money is still there.
Okay, so this is one-time money, all right? But that's not exactly true. There is ongoing expense because we're going to have to put cafeteria workers in there.
Director Rastamelli is already employing those workers now. They would just be shifted from the central kitchen.
So it would just be work out to be a reassignment?
Yes, sir.
Without occurring any ongoing expenses?
Nancy, do you want to, I don't believe so, but Nancy, do you have further clarity on that question?
Yes, Fund 13, which is the Nutrition Services Budget and is independent of the general fund, has budgeted for some of the new equipment that is needed. Our fund can allow for equipment purchases. Some of that equipment, we were able to remove and will be able to reuse as part of this remodel. And then we were able to get a couple pieces under a grant fund that are just now sitting in storage or sitting idle in that kitchen because it is not an operating kitchen. Some of the staff will be relocated from other kitchens, central kitchen, to accommodate for the service there. We may be able or need to add an additional staff member, but that would be a Fund 13 expense. And we have some of those positions available and budgeted through attrition.
Thank you. Obviously, the safe and healthy food preparation for our kids is very, very important to every single member of us. This is so important that President Nava and I actually toured this kitchen when it was first brought to us before the COVID. And you talk about a kitchen that needs some work. I can't state that enough. And of course, your timing couldn't be absolutely worse in asking us to do this. But my concerns would be the funding of this. And one-time funds, Mr. Khan, does seem to be the things that we have, but ongoing expenses could do this. Now, the other question I have is the people that we have that would be transferred into this district without adding positions, there wouldn't be any promotions or changes in status necessary to operate this kitchen? We wouldn't have to incur additional expenses to make this happen?
Nancy?
Those positions are currently in the Fund 13 Nutrition Services Budget and just have not been filled pending the finishing and remodeling of this kitchen.
Okay, maybe I'm not quite understanding. So we have budgeted these positions, but we're not expending the money right now because they haven't been filled?
That is correct. And that would be for a manager. Your Cafe Ones would be relocated and are currently existing.
Okay, so there will be additional ongoing expenses that we are not incurring now?
That position has been budgeted and has been in my budget since we were considering the remodeling of this kitchen over two years ago.
Very good, but we are not, while it's budgeted, it's not being incurred because it hasn't been filled?
And that is just the manager position. The Cafe Ones are already in place.
Okay, why can this be operated without the manager's position?
Not traditionally, no.
Okay, we're in the middle of the pandemic. These, you know, are not traditional times. Can it be operated without the manager?
I would not recommend it, no, not with that number of students and the number of meal services that are being requested and needed at that location.
What's the expense of the manager?
Oh, I do not have that right off the top of my head. I'll have to get back to you with that.
Ballpark figure, are we talking 25,000, 50,000, 100,000, 200,000?
No, dear no. I truly do not know off the top of my head.
Okay, thank you. Thank you, President Nava.
Thank you, Mr. Freitas.
Thanks, staff, for this report, and I also greatly appreciate they're looking for innovative solutions for our kids and for our district.
Thank you. Mr. Freitas, I would probably say we're in the range of 28,000 to 35,000 on a manager, but that is variable.
Very good. Thank you. That's a big help. I appreciate your guess. And Nancy, your guess is much better than most people's full-blown knowledge. So I do very much appreciate all you do for our district and for this presentation here tonight.
Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Porter.
First of all, Ms. Ross Melly, I believe we chatted or I sent an email to you, gosh, three months ago when I went out to check the facility at the Houston Serna School. Mr. Khan, on Fund 40, when you say one-time funds, does that mean they're lost? Or can we move them, shift them to be used for other things?
The board can legally choose to move money out of Fund 40 and back into Fund 01 and vice versa.
So it's a fund that's open for other uses?
Yes, sir.
Okay. Mr. Khan, did you not say when we were talking about Measure U and Measure L that you did not want to incur any new building costs because of the rapid increase in expenditures for concrete and labor and so forth? Because right now we're having a huge construction boom, and it was very difficult to get supplies. Did you not say that during Measure U, Measure L, and that's why you were not taking down any new building projects?
Costs are up, yes, sir.
Okay, so then you want to bid this out, and when do you expect the start date?
It would be the very first day that children are out of, children are out of school if they're back in.
Okay, so if we're on hybrid or if we're on DL, this is not something we need right now, is that correct?
While children aren't in school, there's still food being produced, but it's not being, actually, Nancy, you are distributing out of Acampo Road.
That is correct.
Okay, and is Houston enrollment, is that going up or down?
Houston enrollment is downed, and for approximately 10 kids, 15 kids from the prior year, but the Serna enrollment has actually increased by a like amount.
And then can I ask you one question? Why now?
From the business perspective, it's to be able to get our project out to bid before the rush for contractors in the late spring. From...
But that goes contrary to what you're talking about with Measure U and Measure L?
I think it's a bit divorced from the general market conditions. This is a seasonal thing. Annually, summer projects begin to get bid heavily in the March and April period. So you're forcing yourself into a logjam or bottleneck and competing for fewer and fewer contracts if you bid your projects out.
Is it possible for us?
Is it possible for us as a board to delay this vote for a month or two months and still be able to take it out to bid in January? I believe so. At least a month, maybe two. We'll cut it a little close. If we wait two months, we might be bidding out in March. Yeah, you're talking about March. As I told you last, the last meeting, I would be voting no on any new projects or costs, especially coming out of Fund 40. And especially with the potential for additional funds being used out of 13, which is part of our, our food cost until we were able to have a little bit stabilization and funding from the state and so forth. So I'm going to continue with that, although I do believe this is a project that probably has a degree of urgency to it. But I'd like to see us as a board, maybe, I don't want to use the term kick the can down the road because of negative connotation. But I do think would be prudent for us to move it further down. Maybe to even into January and we see where we are fiscally. We have, high costs have gone up in terms of insurance rates for our employees. We have many people that are working extra hours and we have deferments coming from the state. And I hate to see us use funds for something that right now that we're able to do, even though it's a stretch. And even though that we're on DL, we don't need right away. So thank you for your questions, answers. And Ms. Ross Melly, thank you for answering me back in three months ago. You are what we call a professional and I know that your staff has great love for you and the hard work that you do. So thank you for all you do for Lord of Unified and the kids.
Thank you very much. I would just like to comment and add that since this is a kitchen that is in an existing facility, it would not be considered technically a new build. Because we would be remodeling within the existing footprint. And it would not be to the same extent as a new-built kitchen would be in terms of putting it back together or updating it. And the approval that Fund 13 and Nutrition Services has to go through with the state in order to be able to use the funds to supply equipment and/or expenditures, the state has to approve. We did get approval for this project six to nine months ago with the funds that we had and that approval is only good for, I believe, 12 to 16 months. And there is a lead time for us to be able to get reapproval if this project does not go forward.
Is it possible for you, Ms. Ross Melly, to purchase those items and then warehouse them?
We currently have some of those already warehoused and equipment sitting in the kitchen not being used. Any equipment that sits, it's not good for it to not run and we end up having to spend money to service it to get it back up to speed once it just sits and dries out and the oil dries up and, you know, all of those type of things with unused equipment.
But it is possible to keep some.
It is possible.
Okay, because I was just saying, my point is, it's the, as you know, with the pandemic and the everything going on in terms of employees, employees and benefits and sours and so forth, that the optics are not really good. And I'm a little bit concerned about the need, although I think the need is definitely going to happen there in the future. So thank you for your time.
Yes, and understand with the COVID situation also that the demand to unitized meals has increased so that now everything has to be individually compartmentalized, wrapped and individually packaged and served has also increased the demand on our staff and all of our kitchens. And the central kitchen as well that will be continuing to service the meals, the 325 that we were doing pre-COVID. And I see that that demand will only increase as we come back to school and the existing waiver continues with the free meals.
Okay, thank you again. And I'm pretty sure that what you're doing now is going to continue well into 2021. Although later on, Mr. Khan has a report on ADA. And I believe that we have declining ADA, which also would affect that, but that's for another day. Thank you, Ms. Ross Melly.
Thank you.
Ms. McFarlane, any comments?
Yes, thank you, President Nava. I guess my, the first question I have is, it's how many schools do we have in the district, Mrs. Ross Melly, that do not have a kitchen that are of this size and deliver this level of meals?
None. Houston, Cerna, when they combined, became our largest site that we transport meals to.
Okay, that makes sense. Well, I'm absolutely in favor of this. I'm worried, Mr. Khan, that the optics of this, plus if, you know, we have teachers and other employees that have not received raises and that is there any way, any of this money could be diverted to offset a raise if the ADA money and so forth doesn't come through? While I don't think there's a doubt in any board member's mind, this project needs to be done. I think we're on a balancing act of when to do it, how to do it, and still fulfill our obligations to our employees financially.
Thank you, Ms. McFarlane. Mr. Connectsack?
Thank you, President Nava. Thank you for your report. It sounds to me like a very reasonable request and it sounds like the funds are in fact available. So at this point, I would be in favor of approving this project.
Thank you, Mr. Everly.
Yes, thank you. Ms. Ross Melly, thank you for your report. It offered quite a bit of clarity to the situation. I too took a field trip to see the kitchen. It was quite surprising what I saw. You know, like you said, the walk-in is inoperable and, and those kinds of things. Also, the, the problem with transporting food to maintain the food quality is, is tough. And that is quite a ways out for you. And our food service reputation for quality is, is very high, just like your reputation as a director. So your opinion means quite a bit to me. One of the main things that is guiding me to support this is how the funding is, is working. And I'll just say that I, I, I think that the importance of this project, I did have quite a change from last time we were discussing it where I was not in favor of it. But I'm looking at it now. And I would, like Mr. Connect said, I see it's reasonable and I will support this.
Thank you, Mr. Everly. Nancy, thank you very much. I've always admired you. You're one of the top in our districts in the nutrition. You are the top. And I have no problem, you know, when we start making analogies of all the teachers I get in this and that. It's the kids that are there, that are getting the lunches and they're getting fresh lunches. And that's a poor area and you have all kinds of things that you need to have that, that are handy there. We've been going through this, I think it's a year. And we, we're putting it off because some of the board members are, oh, we don't want to spend money here. Pandemic, hey, it doesn't matter to me. The money is there, Fund 40, Fund 13. I asked one time about some of the funds that were going in. I'm having an echo somewhere.
Sorry, Mr. Nava, it was me.
Okay, the funds that are available there, like for example, I asked, what about, what, what's the contribution of the federal government on funds? Ms. Ross Melly?
Our meals, Fund 13 and the Nutrition Services Department operates entirely on meal participation and reimbursement from the state and federal government for the number of meals that we serve. So we get reimbursed for every meal served, breakfast, lunch, snack and supper. And the Houston Cerna campus serves all four of those meals. And it does have a high participation.
Thank you, Nancy.
Mr. Nava, may I add as well? Generally speaking, you're, the board's Fund 13 is self-sustaining based for itself. Every now and then, there's a slight deficit in the contribution from general fund, but for all in mathematical intents and purposes, it's, it's a, it's a self-sustaining enterprise. Very well-run, I might add. It earns its own money. We, we, we're at 70% free and reduced. We basically have one customer. We, we build the feds through the state and we get paid on time.
Thank you, Mr. Khan. I think you have at least four board members that are in favor of bringing this back. So I think that it should be brought back for more, more discussion if we need to or less discussion and approve this thing. I, I believe that we shouldn't be approving it. Okay. Do we have any student comments? William, any comments? Arianna?
I agree with everything. I definitely think it's something that needs to be worked on, especially if this is going to help any of the students that go to that school.
Thank you. William?
No comments. Thank you.
No comments? Any public comments on this subject? Michelle?
No public comments.
No public comments? And then, Mr. Khan, you have another part of this report, sir.
And thanks to Director Rastamani for her clarification comments. So thank you, Nancy. Second part of this report concerns the board's Turner Road facility, which is currently vacant. The board may recall that we are using that site for some odd storage. It was actually housing a Point Quest program through June 30th of the 1920 year. Point Quest, I believe, has built its own facility in Sacramento and no longer needed the facility. We do have a local program that serves our students in the moderate to severe special ed category that has verbalized that they'd be interested in the property under the same terms and conditions as were available to Point Quest. This firm, as I mentioned, is a Stockton Education Center. They are assignatory to the San Joaquin County Office of Education Master Agreement for Special Ed Services. And we are presently doing business with them, I believe, as well. This request is to seek board direction to bring back the joint use agreement with all of its cost and other appropriate considerations to the November 17th meeting. This was placed on the, the last October meeting. But the board may recall, we delayed it until today. So I'd be happy to answer any question.
Okay, this, this is the Turner, old Turner School on, on railroad, right?
That's correct.
The water's fixed and everything. Doesn't matter what, if it is or not, but we're trying to rent it and we want to keep the, the lease again similar to what we had with Point Quest. Is that correct?
Technically, we want to enter into a joint use. We still want to maintain some use of the facility. But yes, sir.
Okay, and you're getting the same amount of money that we, okay, that's good. Okay, any comments from the board on that, Mr. Everly?
Thank you. I think we should go forward with this. I do like the idea. One suggestion is not about the report, but how it is agendized. I think that making it two complete separate items joined on one report item, I think, just for, I guess, neatness and ease of following through. If we could divide them when they come back, I think that might be a bit easier. And that's it. Thanks.
Mr. Freitas?
Thank you, President Nava. Mr. Khan, Dr. Washer, Point West is still serving a great many of our students, is that correct?
Mr. Freitas, members of the board, yes, we still do use Point Quest.
And, but those students now are no longer being served at Turner, they're being transported to Sacramento or?
Sacramento, yes.
Their own facility.
Their facility in Sacramento. Sorry. Wow. So our special needs children are spending an hour each way in transport?
Sorry. If those students remain in that program and in that facility, then yes, they would. I know that we do have students in other situations who are traveling quite a distance as well. And Mr. Warren is here. If you want more details, he can fill, provide more details.
Yeah, I know this is a little bit off topic, but this is kind of news to me and it's concerning.
Warren?
Yes, can you hear me? Did I hit the right button? Yeah. President Nava, members of the board, Dr. Washer. Yes, for our non-public schools, we have a variety of different types of needs. And different non-public schools help accommodate that. That particular site, we've had a lease agreement for a few years. And, and we did have students that were housed there. When they moved, some of them went with Point Quest, some went to other non-public schools. And there is also a Point Quest facility that's still within our school boundaries. Yes.
Which ones?
It's the former Victor Treatment Center.
Okay. Maybe a future report item or even email, we could be informed how many kids are traveling out of county for these special needs schools?
Yeah. I would just add that, you know, we're kind of at the, we rely on the schools and where they are and the schools that are available to us. So as we have those needs, we have to try to location is always an important piece of that, but we're also trying to find the schools that are going to meet the students' needs the best.
Without a doubt. And, and I, I applaud your efforts and I know, especially in this very challenging situation, I would just like to make sure that our kids are being best served and not enforced to long unnecessary commutes. And maybe, I guess, one of the things going forward, I guess, when we approve these type of expenditures, that we be informed of the commute time that will be involved for this. So anyway, but as obviously, if we can continue to utilize the Turner use site in this joint use agreement, that only makes sense. So, and I apologize for going off topic on this.
No more of that, Mr. Freitas. All right. Mr. Connectsack?
Thank you. Yeah, I have, I don't have much of a comment other than I generally like using joint use agreements. And if we can utilize that, I think that will be positive for us. Thank you.
Thank you, Gary. Ms. McFarlane?
I don't have a lot of comments either than it sounds informative and I would be in favor of it.
Thank you, Ms. McFarlane, Mr. Porter?
No comment. Everything seems very positive.
I don't have any comments. I think everyone's positive for that. I know that, do we have some? It's, it's a necessary thing that we have non-public schools because we do have youngsters that belong there. I don't know about the transportation, whether we, are we responsible for transportation for these kids that, that live in our area to go to Point Quest? And all the other non-public schools, Mr. Warren?
Yes, that is one of the IEP requirements. Yes, that is one of the IEP requirements.
That's in the package deal, okay? When they give us a charge, that transportation is included in it. Thank you. I guess I I know that that's important. Do you have any student comments on this?
No comment.
Yeah, whatever we can do to not have to have special needs students travel an hour to get to school, I'm for it.
Thank you, William. I'm on public comments. Michelle?
Yes, we have one. Michelle. Yes, Michelle Oregon.
All right, Michelle, you're on.
Thank you, President Nava. It was the first item, and maybe that's why I think Mr. Freitas said maybe dividing these items up separately would be helpful. I was speak put in to speak on the first item. I have nothing on this lease agreement. I think it's a good use of funds. Facilities to lease it. Thank you.
Thank you, Michelle. Okay, Mr. Khan, we have attendance and enrollment trends in Loda Unified School District?
Thank you. Thank you, President Nava, members of the board, Dr. Washer, and with apologies to Mr. Porter since he mentioned this item previously, but this was Board Member Neely's request. So staff is requesting postponing this one as well until Mr. Neely returns.
Comment?
No objection to?
No, just one comment. I I looked through your presentation. The bar graphs are nice, but I think for me, if we could just see the actual numbers.
Okay.
Probably easier to look at.
Numbers were actually easier. Doing the bar graphs was
I know. Kind of bar graphs in my life.
Porter, I agree a hundred percent on that. I don't deal with
Nava, I am overwhelmed that you enjoyed something I did.
I'm not in the mood of colors and all of that stuff, you know? Okay, let's any we're gonna no objection on the board to postponing it. Okay, let's go to 2020, 2021 Single School Plan for Student Achievement. Dr. Sally?
Good evening, President Nava, members of the board, Dr. Washer. This item is a the annual report of our Title I School Single Plan for Student Achievement submitted to for information and in the form of probably eighteen hundred pages of documentation. The school sites have worked diligently to review their data and their budgets and the goals of the board as well as the LCAP goals. And in responding, they have formulated these plans. I would comment that there is a challenge this year with the loss of fourth quarter and some data. It was more difficult for the sites to move forward, but they did reach out and utilize other data that they had available to them from local assessments and planned for the upcoming school year as well. So this will come back in two weeks to the board for approval. This item is submitted for your review and information. And so we do have principals on the line. If you have any specific questions or Dr. Seiya also who helps coordinate the the effort under Title I.
Thank you, Dr. Sally. I have one question only. This report is for 2019, 2020. Is that correct?
These are the well, the data that was utilized to formulate the 2020, 2021 plans was from some of that data was from the 1920 year, yes, but the plans are actually 2020, 2021 plans.
I think in some of the reports, it's only the dates are 2019, 2020, if I'm not mistaken. But anyway, any comments, Mr. Everly, Mr. Freitas, Mr. Porter, Mr. Farland, Mr. Connectsack, any comments?
No, thank you.
It's okay. Student comments? William?
No, thank you.
Arianna?
No, thank you.
Okay, any public comments? Michelle?
Yes, we have one. Michelle. Yes, Michelle Oregon.
All right, Michelle, you're on. Michelle Oregon, you're on.
Michelle, you seem to be self muted.
Thanks, Michelle. Good evening, President Nava, members of the board. Again, here we are with single site plans. They're a little different. They are using the new template we used last year. However, I I did hear and received personally some phone calls from school sites that conducted school site council elections and held meetings. However, I don't think that all sites were able to get a quorum of school site council members to agree on these single site plans. And I just ask if this is a verification because I have members that say they have not seen these or have not seen school site councils come together to vote on anything at their school sites even virtually. But I do know that some sites sent out election materials. I just have questions as to whether or not all sites, these have been verified and we have school site councils that voted on what you're being presented with tonight.
Question?
I guess I guess my question through Mr. Nava is to Mr. Solly, if he can verify or Mr. Seiya can verify that all of these have gone through a school site council as I believe the procedures call for.
Mr. Sally?
Mr. Nava, members of the board, if Ms. Oregon, the information we have is that they've proved the follow the approval process sees as outlined. If you have a specific site, you can relay that information to me. I can do the background and get the minutes from the meetings so that we can verify.
Okay, so that all schools still were supposed to elect a school site council and have these approved by them. Is that correct?
These are to be approved by a school council, yes.
Okay, thank you very much.
Thank you. We'll go to the next report, 2020, 2021 Learning Continuity Plan, reviewed by San Joaquin County Department of Education. Dr. Sally?
Yeah, thank you, Dr. Nava, members of the board, Dr. Washer. This is simply a follow up. The Learning Continuity Plan as outlined by Senate Bill 98 was presented to this board on nine eight and voted on for approval on nine fifteen. And following SB 98 guidance was then submitted to the County Office of Education for review and comment. They have since responded that they have reviewed reviewed and they have no comments or modifications. So the report stands as approved on the fifteenth, and this is information reporting back to you, the county's findings.
Thank you, Dr. Sally. Any comments from the board? No comments. Any comments from our students? No comments from our students. I see I'm saying no. Any comments from the public? Michelle?
One, Michelle Oregon.
Michelle, you're on.
Thank you, President Nava, members of the board. We're glad that the county didn't have any issues we with the Learning Continuity Plan. We do see that there are some changes that may be needed as we move forward to bringing students back to school through Mr. Nava to, I believe, Mr. Solly. As we go back and may need to tweak things on a hybrid model, can we make changes to this Learning Continuity Plan?
Dr. Sally?
Thank you, Mr. Nava. The plan is is in fact the plan. It there is a not a lockstep following of the plan as outlined as conditions changed. Some modifications could be made, which we could bring bring back to the board for approval. So they're potentially, given the the situation with COVID and the Senate Bill 98, which enacted the Learning Continuity Plan, we would take that into consideration and bring it back to the board if required.
Thank you, Mr. Sally. Dr. Sally?
Thank you. Thank you very much. That answers our questions.
All right. Problem with this thing, eh? Problem without having an audience and not speaking through these things. Anyway. Well, action item, considered agenda A, routine business. Any board members want to pull any of the items listed? Okay, any? Any? Any anybody from the public wants to pull any items listed?
Yes, Michelle Oregon would like to pull A2.
A2? All right, I need a motion.
President, I moved you.
Okay, I have a motion from Mr. Porter to to approve. Mr. Connectsack, you said?
Yeah, I'll second it.
Seconded because you shouted, okay? It's a favor, okay? Mr. McFarland?
Yes.
Mr. Freitas? Yes. Sir Nava, yes, motion carries six zero. Okay, Ms. Oregon, A2?
Thank you, Mr. Nava. A question on item number two on the contracts list, the agreement with JIM Enterprises. We just approved a contract, I believe it was on the October 20th board meeting for the same thing in the amount of $132,000. And we're coming back with another 33, but it's not an amendment. And I thought that if we had already approved the contract on October 20th, that it would reflect the 132,000. And if there was an amendment where we needed to there was more expense, it would be amended. But this looks like it's a totally separate contract to the October 20th. Can that be explained?
Yeah, Mr. Khan, can you? You have the floor, sir?
Apologize. President Nava, members of board, Dr. Washer, I may have liked to defer to Dr. Solly on this contract.
Dr. Sally?
President Nava, so I spoke with Dr. Seiya today, and I believe this was just some additional sites added to the services of JIM Enterprises. It was some requests that came in after the initial contract was formulated. So it's not an amendment at that point, but it is for similar services and serving parents and helping them to meet their language proficiency goals.
So could Ms. Dr. Solly or Mr. Khan explain in what case would we do the amendment? Why? Why is this? Why is it not amendment to the original contract? Even if they came in later, other school sites wanted to be getting those services for their parents. I don't understand. It seems like we're not clear then on all of the services that a provider is providing or we're paying if it's not amended, if we're not adding to it.
President Nava. Thank you, President Nava, members of board, Dr. Washer. I don't know the circumstances of this contract, but it could be a new contract for convenience. Maybe the vendor requested a new contract rather than amending the original. But we will find out why it was done this way and not be in amendment process.
Okay, thank you. Thank you, board.
All right, thank you. Been moved by Mr. Porter, seconded by Mr. Everly to approve item A2. Mr. Freitas? Ms. McFarland? Mr. Connectsack?
Hi.
And Mr. Nava, yes, motion carries six zero. Okay, personnel matters. I need some motion on personnel matters? Been moved by Mr. Everly, seconded by Ms. McFarland to approve personnel matters. Mr. Porter? Mr. Freitas? Mr. Connectsack?
Hi.
And Mr. Nava, hi, motion carries six zero. All right, we have communications comments from employee group representatives.
Yes, we have one, Michelle Oregon.
Michelle, you're on.
Good evening, President Nava, members of the board, student representatives. Nice to see you live in person on our virtual board meeting. Thank you for your comments tonight. I want to thank the board and and the district for our last bargaining sessions. We feel like there was much collaboration and lots of positive movement towards agreement on returning and the safety for students and staff. We look forward to our bargaining meeting on the fifth and hope for some finalized things. We would still like to address that the safety plans at school sites, addressing protocols for specific issues on a campus have still not been finalized, and we hope that those are finalized in order for us to take a look at that. We do appreciate all of the comments tonight about wanting students back. Teachers do know that the best place to learn is in person. And although we hear and have seen some great distant learning examples, we do want everyone to return safely. As we thank the district for sharing the deploying of air purifiers and PPE to classrooms within this net this last week and express that huge effort and undertaking to get classrooms ready for bringing students and staff back. I want to thank Dr. Washers for meeting and discussing the elections that are that had well, I guess it's close now that happened at three of our school sites and the assurances and communication of security and safety along with the safety for protocols for the public and members that are working on site. We appreciate that. We definitely believe that as we look at items like a kitchen remodel out of Fund 40, that we do look at those personnel costs, the rising costs of employees. We know it is a big amount for the district. But we do need our teachers um, to be able to be teaching. And so we need to keep, we need to retain and recruit new teachers to our district. As you look at the personnel report, you saw many new teachers changing to probationary status. So we look forward to keeping those teachers. And as someone pointed out tonight, um, the uh, virtual recognition for long-term employees that was recognized, although we know looking at the data, we have many more teachers that have served twenty-five years and more in our district and were recognized. And we know that that's also an expense for the district. We look forward to the district really looking at resolving the two thousand nineteen twenty contract. We hope that COLA can be offered to employees um, for what work that they did in two thousand nineteen twenty. And showing them that respect and time for that time worked. Although I appreciate the thoughts of a new kitchen and have been at a site that had transport lunch for many years. I know that the big kitchen does do quite a bit of food service. And if we need to um, keep teachers um, in the classrooms, I hope that we could find a way to do that. And if it is, as someone said, kind of kicking the can down the road a little bit, maybe we need to uh, look along those lines um, so that we can keep our teachers in the classroom and keep our teachers in our district. I appreciate you listening to our department chair, Kathy Jaeger from Delta from Kristen McCullough Middle School and hope that you consider the middle school department chair stipends as you, as we look at moving forward. Thank you for your time this evening. Want to recognize and appreciate our student comments on the SEL and how important that is for all of our students. I know my teachers are still looking for some things, some of our pilot programs rolling out and um, want to wish you a happy election night and hope that you all had a great election day. Thank you.
Thank you, Michelle. Okay, any other comments from public and representatives?
No further comments.
Further comments, Dr. Washer, you have any comments? So comments from Dr. Washer, board advisory committee reports, anybody on the board? None? I need a motion for adjournment. Motion was made by Ms. McFarland to adjourn, seconded by Mr. Porter, Mr. Everly, Mr. Freitas, Mr. Connectsack?
Aye.
Mr. Nava, aye, motion carries six zero. Meeting adjourned.
That's the fastest meeting ever.
Thanks, Jerry.
Way to go, Joe.
All right.